I call this meeting of the Williamsburg James City County School Board to order. Can I get a motion for certification of closed session, please?
Mr. Chair, I certify that the best of each member’s knowledge, the Williamsburg James City County School Board, while in closed session, discussed only public matters lawfully exempt from open meeting requirements as stated in Virginia law, and only such public matters were, as were identified in the motion, convening the closed meeting were read, discussed, or considered.
Thank you, Mrs. Minor. Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? Ms. Serza?
Ms. Cook, aye. Ms. Hummel, aye. Ms. Minor?
Aye.
Mrs. Taylor?
Aye.
Mrs. Young?
Aye.
Dr. Beers?
Aye.
Mr. Kelly?
Aye. Thank you. That takes us to 3.01, Pledge of Allegiance. Tonight we have with us Carter Moats, a 4th grader from Matthew Whaley. Carter, if you could come forward and lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Everyone, please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Carter. I had a pleasure getting to know Carter before the meeting. That takes us to 3.02, the role. Ms. Serza?
Dr. Beers?
Here.
Ms. Cook?
Here.
Ms. Hummel?
Here.
Ms. Minor?
Present.
Mrs. Taylor?
Here.
Mrs. Young?
Here.
Mr. Kelly?
Here. Thank you. Takes us to 4.01. Mrs. Cook, can I get a motion for approval of the agenda?
Yes, Mr. Chair. I’d like to make a motion to approve the agenda as presented, but with the following amendment, the addition of item 6.02, Matthew Whaley School Spotlight.
Thank you. Is there a second of the ended agenda?
Second.
Any discussion? Ms. Serza?
Ms. Hummel?
Aye.
Ms. Minor?
Aye.
Mrs. Taylor?
Aye.
Mrs. Young?
Aye.
Dr. Beers?
Aye.
Ms. Cook?
Aye.
Mr. Kelly?
Aye. Thank you. 5.01, Announcements Superintendent Report. Dr. Heron?
Good evening, Mr. Chair. On Thursday, 27th of October, WJCC’s school counseling programs will be hosting the Virginia College Tour at Jamestown High School. Attendees will have the opportunity to speak with representatives from over 70 colleges and universities. This year, students and their families may attend a college admissions panel with a select group of college admission officers and representatives. Here, they will be able to ask questions and learn about analyzing transcripts, choosing the right school, using the Common App, and much more. The college admission panel begins at 5:15 in the Jamestown High School Lecture Hall, and the fair will run from 6:30 through 8:30 in the cafeteria. There’s no charge for admission, and all high school students are encouraged to attend. On Wednesday, November 16th, WJCC will host its first Parent Academy of the school year. The topic is resiliency, helping your child cope with anxiety. Attendees will learn about school-related anxiety, how to identify the signs, how it affects students, and coping and preventative strategies. To register, please visit wjccschools.org and click on the slide on the homepage. And finally, today, we broke ground for the new James Blair Middle School. I’d like to thank all of the school board members who were able to attend, as well as several officials from the city and county. We’re excited about moving this project forward, and we will provide the board with updates as we reach milestones along the way. Those are all of the announcements I have this evening, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Dr. Heron. Is there any announcements from board members tonight? I would, I would second the Parent Academy. I went, I attended a couple of those last year, and those were very worthwhile and very educational. I would encourage parents to attend that. Also, tonight, unfortunately, it was a conflict. The Williamsburg Education Foundation is meeting, having their fundraiser kickoff, and I would encourage everyone to support. The Education Foundation has, it delivers grant money to our teachers for innovative learning and has been well received by both the teachers and the community. So I would encourage everyone to support both of those. 6.01, Board Recognitions. Dr. Heron?
This evening, Mr. Chair, I’m delighted to introduce Matthew Whaley Elementary School, and Mrs. Robin Ford is here to introduce the School Spotlight. Thank you, Mrs. Ford.
Good evening, Mr. Kelly, Ms. Cook, members of the School Board, and Dr. Heron. My name is Robin Ford, and I am the proud principal of the Matthew Whaley School. Our school is unique, not only in its history and location in our community, but also in the many wonderful extracurricular learning opportunities our students have every year. This evening, we would like to share one particular program with you, our Morning News Program. Daily, our students have the opportunity to communicate, collaborate, and integrate their skills and knowledge as they deliver the news to our student body. I would like to introduce our teacher leader, Mr. Chris Van Duzen, a Matthew Whaley graduate, Haley Bauer, and current Matthew Whaley student, Katie Moats, who will tell you more about our Morning News.
Haley, would like to go first?
Hi, my name is Haley Bauer, and I am a 6th grade student at Berkeley Middle School. The Morning News helped me so much going into middle school. Most of the people that I know from, that I know now, were from the Morning News. I met in the Morning News. I have a technology class this year, and being on the Morning News helped me learn about computers and how to use them, and that’s really helped with my technology class. I am more social, and it’s just helped a lot.
Thank you, Haley.
Hi, my name is Katie Moats. I hold the position of the Morning News Director, News Director. The Morning News has taught me many leadership skills. Being the Director of the Morning News is very tough and difficult. The Morning News has taught me how to deal with technical problems, different people, and different personalities. I am very thankful for the teacher support and staff support of the Morning News. We work very hard every day to improve. Thank you.
Thank you, Katie.
They do work very hard, and when you see the video, you’ll see how teamwork comes into play, creative solutions to problems, and Haley, we were talking about social skills, and there’s leadership skills. There’s so many different leadership opportunities. When you watch the video, I challenge you to see, to count how many adults you see in the video, and there are so many jobs. I think we left out video editors in the video, but the video will explain itself. It’s, the time lapse, it’s about 20 minutes from the time they get off the bus until the time they’re supposed to be in their seats, ready to learn at 9:30 without disrupting instruction. So, Morning News.
The high today is 72 degrees Fahrenheit. The low is 82 degrees Fahrenheit. The high today is, the low today is 67 degrees Fahrenheit. Did you know rain can fall 3 to 8 meters per second? Back to you, Catherine.
Many schools have Morning News programs. We like to think that ours is a little different.
We don’t pre-record, then post on YouTube. We go live every time, every day. We don’t need an adult to hold the cameras for us, or run the sound, or tell us when we’re doing something wrong.
Well, sometimes.
In fact, the students do everything. We have a staff of 35 students with 13 on-air personalities.
We even have a news director, two floor directors, a technical director, a sound engineer, multimedia director, a teleprompter, broadcast supervisor, three camera operators, four broadcast associates, a lighting specialist, and Emily is the key grip. We call her Cord Girl.
We get off the bus at 9:10, check in with our teachers, and then head to the newsroom, which is the computer lab. We set up the news desk, soundboard, V-Bric broadcasting module, lighting, three cameras, three microphones, two backdrops, teleprompter laptop and monitor, multimedia laptop, channel switcher, and too many cords and cables to count.
Actually, there are 25 cables. It looks like spaghetti.
Several computers are logged into the Matthew Whaley mobile channel. The goal is to have a broadcast signal by 9:18.
Once the broadcast signal is established, four broadcast associates go to check on all the classrooms to offer assistance to teachers if they have trouble logging in and viewing the news.
The sound check and the camera check also begin when the signal is established. The crew troubleshoots any problems before 9:22.
That’s when opening credits begin.
The news is given, which includes menu, weather, birthdays, the Pledge of Allegiance, the Patriot Pride Pledge, this day in history, upcoming events, and any other appropriate news.
No one ever says, “That’s not my job,” because even though I may be a camera operator, the lights still need to be set up if Tevin’s busted late.
So every job is my job. We all feel that way. We also learn leadership skills on and off the sub.
We teach each other new things almost every day.
There are always opportunities during lunch or recess to meet and work on Morning News projects.
That’s the other thing. The Morning News is set up so it shouldn’t interfere with classroom instructions. All of our meeting and work sessions occur during lunch, recess, or in the morning before 9:30.
Also, we are all required to keep our work up to date, return library books on time, maintain good citizenship, and always promote our Patriot pride of being respectful, responsible, hardworking, and safe through our words and our actions.
We set the example in our school because we know that being a part of the Morning News is not a right. It is a privilege that can be taken away.
We know that sometimes kids don’t always listen to directions, and we sometimes don’t pay attention to the lesson, and then we mess up and frustrate you, our educators. We know it.
But remember this. The next time you look at us and worry about the fate of the world, think again. Don’t be too concerned for our future, because if we can do this, just think what we’ll be capable of when we grow up.
Good morning, Matthew Whaley, on September 9, 2016. I’m your host Shelby Gilbert with your co-host, Micah Chisholm. Good morning, Micah.
Good morning, Shelby. Today we have some great stories, but first, let’s go to the Patriot Pledge with Miss Kenzie Peterson. Good morning, Kenzie.
Good morning, Micah. I’m the Kenzie Peterson, and I will be leading you in the pledge. Please put your right hand over your heart. Ready, salute, pledge.
Thank you for that. I appreciate that. Any board member comments on the Morning News at Matthew Whaley? Ms. Cook?
I can’t help myself. I’m sorry. You indulge me. So, both of my children participated in the Morning News with Mr. V, and talked about it almost every day, particularly the chords. That was a common theme at dinner every night. But it teaches kids to think on their feet, to be organized. Thank you for that. And anyway, it’s just a wonderful program, and to this day, even though they’re in middle school, they talk about it and remember it fondly, and it was really a part of their educational formation and journey. So, thank you.
Any other board members?
I remember Mr. Van Duzen very fondly with my children going through, and although I don’t think they were newscasters, as the once-chairman of the Strawberry Festival, I remember quite clearly, really, “Oh, we’ve got to get on the Morning News! We’ve got to push the Strawberry Festival tickets!” And it was always like, “Okay, how do we get the word out? It’s the Morning News. We, you know, always use the Morning News.” So, it’s experiential learning at its best, and the skills that these kids bring with them to middle school and on just can’t be quantified. So, thanks so much for doing this program.
Yes, and thank you Haley and Katie for coming to talk to us tonight. Since you do the Morning News, I’m sure this was just no, this wasn’t intimidating at all. This was fine. So, great. Thank you much. Appreciate it. That takes us to 6.01, Board Recognitions.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. We have several recognitions tonight. Because of their achievement in building effective family-school partnerships, Lafayette High School and Lafayette PTSA have been recognized as a 2016-18 National PTA School of Excellence. This designation is awarded when a PTA and school have achieved a high level of family engagement, or when a PTA and school have made substantive positive improvement in families’ perceptions by the end of the school year. Would Assistant Principal Michelle Newcomb, Lisa Lucas, and other members of the Lafayette PTSA’s leadership team please come up to the front to be recognized? Thank you for the recognition. That’s a token of our appreciation. I brought some of our, um, farmland cow, so if you would mind, I’ll, thank you so much. Jamestown, Lafayette, and Warhill High Schools have all, have all been named Wise Blue Star Schools. This recognition is earned when a school achieves an 80% pass rate on the Financial Literacy Certification Test, and have either a majority of students on a given, on a given grade level take the test, or have students who took it achieve a score of 85% or higher. Would Crystal Haskins from Jamestown, Michelle Newcomb from Lafayette, and Eric Ames from Warhill please join us up front on behalf of your school? Now, we would like to acknowledge several members of the School Board. The Virginia School Board Association recognizes board members for their dedication, time, and hard work in improving boardsmanship skills through VSBA meetings, conferences, board development, and training, and active involvement in the association. Board members earn credits from VSBA Academy Awards, which are based on participation from July 1st to June 30th of each year. There are five levels of award with certificates and pins awarded for particular levels. Please join me in congratulating several members for this accomplishment. And first of all this evening, Mr. Jim Kelly, our Chair, is receiving the Award of Honor Level 4. And in addition, Mr. Kelly has achieved a gold pin for 68 credits earned over two years. Congratulations. And second, Mrs. Kira Cook, Vice Chair, and she is receiving this evening the Award of Excellence Level 3. I don’t think I’m going to participate in that one. And also, Ms. Cook has earned the silver pin, having achieved 48 credits over two years. Very well done. Next, we’d like to honor James Beers, Dr. Beers, Parliamentarian. If you’d like to come forward. Dr. Beers is receiving an Award of Recognition Level 1 this evening. Congratulations. I’d also like to recognize Mrs. Mary Minor this evening. Please come forward. Mrs. Minor is accepting Award of Recognition Level 1 this evening. Congratulations. And finally, we’d like to rec, sorry. Finally, we’d like to recognize Mrs. Hummel, who’s receiving an Award of Recognition Level 1. Please come forward. at next month’s regular meeting. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Dr. Heron. And we were, we were not expecting the VSBA awards, but professional development is an important part of board service, and I thank all the board members who have, all the board members haven’t participated in professional development, and appreciate all their good, hard work. That takes us to 7.01, Citizens Comments. Dr. Beers?
It’s at this point in our meeting where citizens are invited to address the board. The citizens desiring to speak have submitted speaker cards to the clerk prior to the start of tonight’s meeting. Speakers are asked to come to the podium when their names are called, state their names for the record, and direct their comments to the Chair of the Board. It is, it is the Board’s interest and desire that all comments are heard and respected. Hence, the citizens are asked to not engage in applauding, verbal outbursts, or any other type of demonstrations during the presentation. Personal matters are not considered in public meetings. Therefore, the Board requests that all speakers refrain from making reference to specific individuals in any form or fashion. Though the Board does not respond to your comments, your comments are heard and appreciated. Each speaker is allocated three minutes to make their presentation, and the Board asks that you respect this time limitation. Also, please be reminded that no time may be yielded to another speaker. Your acceptance and adherence to these guidelines will be greatly appreciated. Thank you, Mr. Chair, and my directions are concluded.
Thank you, Dr. Beers. Mrs. Cook?
Jessica O’Brian, please.
Let me, didn’t expect to be first. Sorry.
You’re also last.
Yeah, okay. Oh, okay. That’s easy. I’m Jessica O’Brian. I’m an independent insurance agent here in Williamsburg. I’m also the Secretary of the NAACP and the President of altogether a local community nonprofit. I would like to inquire about the renaming of Rawlsburg Elementary. I haven’t heard of any progress coming up with new naming guidelines, and I’d like to express my concern that this process be completed as soon as possible, so the citizens of Williamsburg James City County can move forward on choosing a new, more appropriate name. In addition, the news reporting in the Virginia Gazette when the School Board voted to change the name was alarming. The newspaper reported that neither the principal nor the teachers were at all prepared to explain why the name was being changed. Indeed, a teacher was quoted as saying that she had no idea why it was happening. Unless she had her head buried in the sand, this seems very ingenious, and the issue, as the issue had been discussed in the local paper for several weeks before the vote. Perhaps someone that had out of touch with important news directly relating to her job and the students for whom she is responsible is not actually so well-qualified to be leading the children, the education of our children. In fact, this change in school name is an excellent opportunity to talk with the students at Rawlsburg about why the change was important. A real teaching moment related to a lesson on how important it is to value all the people in our community, all our friends and all the adults in our lives, to teach that everyone has inherent worth and dignity, not just leaders. This is, and to reveal that even adults make mistakes and can be very wrong. This is a valuable lesson if we want to raise thinking children and affirm the value of their natural, inborn sense of fairness and empathy. I hope that the School Board sets the tone for this going high moment, as Michelle Obama has modeled recently, and encourages the administration at Rawlsburg Elementary and indeed at all James, Williamsburg James City County schools to use this renaming as a valuable lesson in citizenship. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. O’Brian. Were there speaker cards tonight? That takes us to the Consent Agenda. Can I get a motion for approval of the Consent Agenda 8.01, Approval of Minutes from the Following Meetings, September 20th, 2016, and October 4th, 2016. 8.02, Financial Report and Monthly Bills and Payrolls, September 2016. 8.03, Personnel Actions as Presented This Evening. And 8.04, Resolution R1416, School Psychology Awareness Week, November 14th through 18th, 2016. Can I have a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I move the acceptance of the consent agenda as presented.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Ms. Serza?
Mrs. Taylor?
Aye.
Mrs. Young?
Aye.
Dr. Beers?
Aye.
Ms. Cook?
Aye.
Ms. Hummel?
Aye.
Ms. Minor?
Aye.
Mr. Kelly?
Aye. Thank you. That takes us to 9.01, Action Item 9.01, School Board Advisory Committee Appointments. Can I get a motion for approval of the 2016-2017 Advisory Committee Member Appointments and Committee Charges as presented this evening?
Mr. Chairman, I move the approval of Action Item 9.1, School Board Advisory Committee Appointments.
Is there a second?
Second.
During discussion. It’s been moved and seconded for approval of the 2016-2017 Advisory Committee Member Appointments and Committee Charges as presented this evening. Ms. Serza?
Mrs. Young?
Aye.
Dr. Beers?
Aye.
Ms. Cook?
Aye.
Ms. Hummel?
Aye.
Ms. Minor?
Aye.
Mrs. Taylor?
Aye.
Mr. Kelly?
Aye. Thank you. Action Item 9.02, Can I get a motion to award a contract for RFP number 17-11110, Engineering Services for the Design of the Norwich Elementary School HVAC Replacement to Mosley Architects in the amount of $298,543.
Mr. Chair, I move approval of Item 9.02, Award a Contract for RFP Number 17-11110, Engineering Services for the Design of the Norwich Elementary School HVAC Replacement to Mosley Architects in the amount of $298,543.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? It’s been moved and seconded for the Award of Contract for RFP 17-11110, Engineering Services for the Design of the Norwich Elementary School HVAC Replacement to Mosley Architects in the amount of $298,543. Mrs. Serza?
Mrs. Hummel?
Aye.
Ms. Minor?
Aye.
Mrs. Taylor?
Aye.
Mrs. Young?
Aye.
Dr. Beers?
Aye.
Ms. Cook?
Aye.
Mr. Kelly?
Aye. Thank you. That takes us to Information and Discussion Items. 10.01, Fiscal Year 2018 through 2017 Superintendent’s Proposed Capital Improvement Plan. Dr. Heron?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. It is my pleasure this evening to present my proposed capital improvement plan this evening. As you know, on September 20th, 2016, Ms. Berta presented the Capital Improvements Development Committee Recommendations. Based on further research and analysis of the recommended capital improvements by the committee, I’ve made some adjustments to the plan which Ms. Berta will present on my behalf this evening. Before that, I want to thank the members of the Booster Club and Lafayette High School students who presented at the public hearing on October 4th. The concerns expressed about the path students The concerns expressed about the path students take from Lafayette High School through the War Hill Sports Complex were of great concern to the Board and to me. Due to the real concerns for the safety of students, I have not included a walkway from Lafayette High School to the War Hill Sports Complex in the updated CIP. Students told us they had an unwritten rule not to take the path alone due to its location. My main concern is that students using the proposed walkway through an isolated wooden area unsupervised would present a major safety issue in the future. I visited Lafayette High School the morning after the CIP public hearing, examined the student pathway, spent time with Lafayette High School Administration and Mr. Lynn, the Athletic Director, working toward a better and safer solution for students. Collaboratively, we decided it was vital to students' safety to immediately prohibit students using the unsafe path. Mr. Lynn has communicated this expectation to all coaches and athletic teams at Lafayette High School. Instead of the proposed walkway, WJCC will continue to provide ongoing, regular transportation to safely transport students to the practice fields. Coach Lynn is providing staff with a schedule of sports, transportation needs, so that we can make this happen consistently and fully meet the needs of staff and students. Second, and again with full collaboration and support of the Athletics Director, Mr. Lynn, and the administration, I have removed the permanent practice light- field lighting from Fiscal Year 23 of the Committee-recommended CIP. Together, we've decided on a solution that will be much more immediate and cost-effective in the form of acquiring portable field lights for the practice fields. Mr. Snipes and Mr. Lynn are currently working to implement this solution. Next, I draw your attention to a change in Fiscal Year 19. The cafeteria and core space expansion of Jamestown High School will remain in Fiscal Year 19. The funding for this request is accomplished through a shift in funding as the total projected cost for design and expansion of all three high schools in Fiscal Year 21 and 22 includes expansion of the core area and cafeteria for Jamestown High School. Having walked through the cafeteria two weeks ago, it was very evident that due to capacity issues, this space will need to be expanded prior to adding additions to the high schools in Fiscal Year 22. Therefore, this project will remain in Fiscal Year 19 in my proposed CIP. These changes result in an overall reduction of $2 million from the original recommendation of the CIP Committee. Ms. Berta, Chief Financial Officer, will now present an overview of all of the Fiscal Year 18 projects and the five-year plan, and is ready to respond to any questions that you may have. Thank you, Ms. Berta.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Berta. Dr. Heron, I would like to take this opportunity to thank you for the immediate look at the safety of the Lafayette students and taking the path and the immediate actions there. I appreciate those actions. Ms. Berta?
Good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the Board. Dr. Heron, before you this evening is the Superintendent's Proposed Fiscal Year 18 through 27 Capital Improvement Plan. As we begin to review, please note the focus of this presentation includes the following. Our main focus being on Fiscal Year 18 as that is the next immediately funded year. We will review the modifications, some of which already have been discussed, with the additions and deletions to Fiscal Year 18 from the adopted Fiscal Year 17 five-year plan. All projects include an anticipated A&amp;E design cost of 10%, contingency of 5%, and an escalation at an annual rate of 3%. A new project may appear in the CIP for the first time due to new or updated information being received. And a note that is new in this presentation is with the opening of the James Blair Middle School, new buses may be needed in Fiscal Year 19. Once a redistricting plan has been approved by the school board, the number of needed buses will be determined at that time. To recap the projects that are included in Fiscal Year 18, there are exterior masonry repairs necessary at Clara Bird Baker for $1,311,272. The design of the Rawlsburg HVAC replacement for $210,000. This is a three-year project. Entrance redesign at DJ Montague for $140,000. Sidewalk and parking lot corrections also at DJ Montague for $80,500. The entrance redesign at Norridge Elementary for $105,000. Berkeley Middle School, replacement of electrical equipment in the 100 and 200 areas for a total of $222,094. Replacement of the auditorium seating at Berkeley Middle School, The roof replacement at Lafayette, we did go to a different vendor to verify that what we were receiving in that cost was accurate. That was an accurate cost, so we have left that $2.6 million in the budget because that is what we are getting from two vendors is necessary in order to properly replace that roof at Lafayette. Toenan Middle School, replacing the walk-in refrigerator and freezer, $82,400. The Jamestown High School HVAC design, this is again a three-year project, $320,000. The EFS repair at Jamestown, $86,500, exterior insulation finishing systems. Parking lots, division-wide, $118,785. Fire panels, division-wide, $105,600. And the War Hill Pathways Maker Space and Chemistry Lab, $300,000. Changes in the future years, 19 through 27. The Jamestown Cafeteria core space expansion, as Dr. Heron alluded to, we have reduced our funding request in Fiscal Year 22 for the high school expansions to support this project in Fiscal Year 2019. Currently, as of the September 30th, 2015 count, Jamestown was over-capacity by 100 students. Based on the 10-day count that was taken on September 20th, Jamestown High School was over-capacity by 139 students. We're still in the process of finalizing our September 30th count, so I can provide that information to you once that report is finalized. But those numbers continue to climb. War Hill High School, we shifted the refurbishment from the CIP Development Committee's recommendation from 2020 to 2021 in an effort to balance our funding request. In Lafayette, as Dr. Heron has alluded to, we have removed the practice field lighting with a different alternative solution. So to recap our five-year request, reviewing what we had presented as the CIP Development Committee, our total is reduced by $2 million. That will be impacted in 2022. That number was $23 million in the prior presentation. So our five-year request is $52,301,243. As a reminder, for upcoming meetings on November 1st, we will have a school board discussion and ranking of our capital improvement projects. November 15th will be a public hearing on the Superintendent's Proposed CIP. And then our hope is by December 13th, we can adopt as a school board our CIP for passing to our funding partners. That concludes our presentation, and I'll be happy to entertain any questions.
Or member questions? Ms. Young?
Ms. Berta, the withdrawal of the walkway completely from the Lafayette school facility, one of the things that was spoken of is that there needed to be a lot more information, but it has now been completely removed, is my understanding.
That is correct. The recommendation is removal.
Okay, so there is absolutely no- I don't want to say no way, but so that is- that's basically off the board, even though I think that would be a good solution for the- I mean, for the community.
That is the Superintendent's recommendation. This is being passed to you for your input, and you certainly can add things and delete things as we have presented them. That is your purview.
Okay, was this passed by the county also?
We have not shared this document with county and city at this point. We don't- you typically share that until you have voted on it and approved your CIP as a school board.
Right, okay, thank you. Because I mean, I still think that that's a viable solution to the way of getting students back and forth over to the sports complex. And I do appreciate the fact that they can't access that at this point. So I want to thank the Superintendent for taking that under advisement and getting kids off of there completely. Okay, I will think of how I went to present this in a different way because I still think that's a viable thing for kids. But anyway, thank you.
Thank you.
I might piggyback on to Mrs. Young's comment. I can appreciate the concern for safety, and I'm glad that we found an alternate solution. But I'm not sure if it's going to be a long-term solution. And so I also feel like completely taking the walkway out of the CIP rather than maybe delaying it for a couple of years that we can see how this alternate solution works out for everyone. And then at that point, reassess and see how the transportation's actually working. And then we still have kind of a holding place for the walkway in the CIP. I think right now, gas prices are cheap, and we have maybe an extra bus that can hopefully help transport the students. I'm not sure, long-term, whether that's a viable alternative. And maybe, you know, it would be nice to have a walkway that would easily connect students from one place to the other place without having to have a bus driver and idling buses and going back and forth. So I agree with Mrs. Young. I would like there to be a little more investigation done, especially- and if it ends up that we can't do it, it's an ADA concern, it's going to be $1.5 million or whatever. But I can understand that, and maybe at that point, we deal with that. But I'm not 100% convinced that this is an item that should be removed completely from the CIP.
Mrs. Cook?
Thank you. Thank you for the presentation and for the recommendation, Dr. Heron. I actually, I appreciate that the walkway was removed from this CIP. That said, I agree with my colleagues that I would like some more investigation done. I think that, when I think about our instruction from the Commonwealth to look at the needs of this- and present budgets of need, I don't think a walkway is a need that we have. And I don't- and I'm concerned about the opportunity cost. If I have to weigh buses against pathways or other capital needs that we might have and compare that to a walkway, and when I look at how many students a walkway impacts versus perhaps another investment, I'm not convinced that the request should come from us. That said, there are other connective pathways and walkways that are- that connect schools to other recreational facilities in the county. If I understand correctly, those have come to fruition through the county CIP process and that they have successfully applied for grants to, at least in part, fund those facilities. So I wonder if it's an opportunity for us not to drop the idea, but maybe not have it be part of our request to the funding bodies, but start a long-term conversation with the county and Parks and Rec to see if it's a priority for them and if it fits in their strategic plan, and if so, if it's something that we can partner on. But when I think about it as our request to our funding bodies, I'm not sure it passes that test of need, particularly when you add what else we need. So I don't want to drop it either, but I'm not sure it fits in our CIP.
Any other board member questions or comments in the-
That's just for the walkway, but I have another comment. But did you want to say something?
I was just going to say one thing about what Ms. Cook just said. I would really like to pursue the idea of working with Parks and Recreation and seeing if somehow this can be worked out between Parks and Recreation and our needs. And I agree, it's not necessarily- we have other needs that are probably far more necessary. But on the other hand, when I look at Clara Bird Baker, Jamestown High School, these schools that have access from the public to the grounds, I also think that's one of the reasons I think Parks and Recreation is the perfect place to go with this and see if we can't get some added benefit from working together with them. And I do appreciate everything that you've done, Ms. Berta. This is a tremendous amount of work, and I do thank you.
Mrs. Minor?
First, thank you, Dr. Heron, for your recommendations. I know they were thoughtful, and as board members have already suggested, we have lots of challenges and only a certain amount of money. And I'm always hesitant to play balanced- a set of students or a set of needs against the other. I don't- I'm not comfortable with that zero-sum game. But I have to say, my members are correct. If we have needs for classroom space and a walkway, then we really need to come to the decision what is our major, primary responsibility and all. So I would also like to say, moving it back further because you just mentioned, as we go to James- opening James Blair, and we need more buses and all, if this long- this solution with the buses is something that's going to be viable, placed with the demand for the buses. That's all, and if there's some other way. Probably, I'm the most familiar with that because I know that when the youngsters run through that path, they really connect to the walking path that's around the whole War Hill track. And I do walk- and I have walked that War Hill track, all seven and a half kilometers, on a pretty regular basis, so I know where the students come into it. Unlike Ms. Young, I've never chosen to go down into the ravine. But I do know where they come up and they enter it. And I think that while we talk about safety concerns, there's a number of citizens and bike people and walking people that use that path all the time. So if we have a concern about safety for our students, we also need to talk about whether there's a safety concern for the general public using that seven-kilometer walkway around War Hill. So I think that, yeah, maybe we need to have a conversation with the Park and Recs people about- about they're going into their next comprehensive plans. So perhaps there's opportunities for enhancing it, particularly because we do have those great facilities behind Jamestown and Clara Bird Baker for walking, and also the walking path that goes from Freedom Park up to our middle and elementary school on Jolly Pond Road. So there's- we already have some relationships, and perhaps this is another one we could enhance and improve. So I think that's a great idea. My second comment is not in this current-year CIP because I do think we're in a good position with that, and I'd like to thank Dr. Heron for that. But I have some concerns in the out-years with the discussion of capacity expansion at the high school. And I think I've said before, before we do expansion, have we decided as a community that maintaining schools of a relatively mid- low, mid-range size is what we want as a community? Or do we want to start growing high schools that are closer to, you know, 19 to 2,000 students? Or do we want to create high schools? I think there's a- I think that's a discussion before we get into those out-years that I'd like to see this community have based on research and best practices. And as Ms. Cook has pointed out several times, for a division of our size, we have the fewest number of school buildings. And I still happen to believe that keeping high schools more compact provides a lot more opportunities for interactions of students and teachers and parents and community with those schools and building those communities. So I have not so much a concern about this year, going forward for '17, but I do, in the forward year, think that we need now, as a board and the community, to engage in what- what do we want our high schools for the 21st century to look like? And if we want to do 21st educational opportunities, does that mean we do it better in smaller schools with more collaboration? Or with larger schools with more opportunities but less collabora- I mean, I think we need- we need you all to do the research to help the board and community come forward on that. That's just my thought. Other than that, I don't have too many more comments. Though it would be helpful for me, as a board member, though I know I will be in the prioritizing meeting, if you could let us know which ones are for safety and ADA and compliance reasons, and which are capacity needs, and which are- I don't know. I think that everything is either safety or capacity, pretty much, at this point. But if you could let us know which are which, that would be great and helpful. And I think it'd be helpful for the planning commission to know that, too.
Dr. Beers?
Yeah, I agree with Mrs. Minor about the capacity of not just the high schools, any school. This division has a lot of pride in keeping the size of the high schools at the size that they currently are. And there is research that really validates the value- And, and there is research that really validates the value of keeping high, keeping high schools at the lower end rather than, than have schools that are 2,000, 3,000. So, when it comes to expanding, and this is, you know, this is a conversation with the community, is, do we build, you know, another school or do we expand our existing high schools so they become larger? And I think, you know, there are educational and philosophical reasons for that.
And the, and the physical footprint of the schools on the property that they have?
Right.
Where do we impact, what do we impact in traffic?
I agree. The other thing, the other, the only other thing I would say about the walk, that walk through, is even if we do build a first-rate walk-through that covers that, you know, that goes across that ravine, has lights, all those kinds of things, that ravine is quite a ways away from Lafayette High School and also from Whisk. I still am concerned about even well-lit places in the evening can potentially create risks for our, our students, for our young people that choose to use that. And I, I'm not opposed to putting it in, you know, farther down, but I, philosophically, I'm just, I'm, I'm, I would be very uncomfortable, given the fact that things could happen on that walkway, and it would be quite a ways away from, from those students. And so, I, I would, I would simply say that, to be really cautious about that.
Mrs. Hummel, do you have another comment?
I wanted to thank Mrs. Cook for the suggestion about Parks and Rec because I do think it does seem like it's a Parks and Rec kind of promoting healthy, promoting walking access, the community, the whole thing. I think does seem to fall in that area more so than HVAC systems and roofs and things like that. But I do think it's an access issue and it's an access issue for Lafayette High School athletes. And I do appreciate that we don't want to pit one school's needs against the others. I can appreciate that. I also think we should, when we have schools and we have different fields and different access to those fields, that we need to just keep that, that in mind. My other question was really more about just changing gears altogether. The, the $300,000 for the makerspace and how basically, whether that, I'm assuming that's talking about knocking down wall or making actual, if someone could just explain what the $300,000 involves?
We can actually, we can, we can provide you with some information and architectural, just very basic preliminary sketch of what it would look like in terms of makerspace. I can provide that to the board.
I think that would be helpful because whatever, and is that, the $300,000, it translates pretty evenly from one school to the other school's environment and facilities and that's, that's what I'm trying to kind of wrap my mind around.
As you're aware, we have $300,000 for the other two high schools in the out-years and until their programs are launched and moving into place, it's difficult to, to know if the spaces will need to look exactly alike because they'll be built to support the programs that they're developing with, with their grant opportunities. So, we put the placeholder in to provide that equitable opportunity to all three of the high schools.
Dr. Heron, Dr. Heron, does, so are we talking about $300,000 for Warhill alone or are we talking about $300,000 per high school?
$300,000 per high school. Warhill comes first because the program's already launched.
Right.
And then we've put the same amount into the, into the planning for the next two years, not knowing yet what the needs of the schools are, but giving an equitable amount to each high school as they develop their innovative programs at the high school level.
And is this for pathways or for Project Lead the Way?
This is focused on pathways and makerspace and collaboration space for students, for project-based learning mainly. And I believe the Warhill amount does include a chemistry lab.
It does. So, the more, the more detail on that would be appreciated.
Certainly, we can provide you some additional detail on, on that amount, for sure.
Any other questions from board members? Jumping off where Mrs. Hummel was, if, if for the 2018 projects and maybe the 2019 projects, have a pair, a sentence or two to kind of briefly explain. I think we've been exposed to those before, but just to put that on the top of our, top of our stack would be a good thing, good thing to do, especially prior to the November 1st meeting, so that we can all come at, come at it from the same side.
May I draw your attention to one thing that's in your packet this evening?
Uh-oh.
If you open your folder on the left-hand side, we do have the details and verifications of where we received all of the information for the fiscal year '18 projects. So, a lot of your questions about that first year, funded year, will be in that packet. If you need additional information, certainly we can provide that to you, and we have not done that in the out-years.
Thank you for officially admitting my request.
That's what happens.
The second page, opening Jamestown Middle School, new buses needed in fiscal year '19. When are those buses, say, redistricting plan's been approved by the school board, will that be too late for you to react in order to have, when we, when we approve the redistricting plan, say we do it in the spring of '18, is that too late for you to react to get buses?
It's going to require continued discussion with our counterparts on the county and city, and that's one reason we added that bullet here, so that we can have that discussion and put that on their radar. They are aware that they have support costs, including buses, that will be coming online with the new, new middle school. So, we just wanted to make sure that we had that remark in our presentation and we will continue those communication lines with our counterparts.
In other words, yes.
Yes.
Recommended projects for 2018, 2022, the second to last slide. We have, you have dollar amounts for each fiscal year?
Yes.
Have those dollar amounts been budgeted by the county and the city? Yeah, I think they give us guidelines for how much our CIP can be per year.
We are above what the fiscal year '18 amount was in their original plan, but we have explanations for why that is, particularly with the roof at Lafayette, that cost's coming in substantially higher than what we anticipated last year. The DJ Montague piece, the change in our practice for Rawlsburg with the HVAC because of the need to replace that system. So, we have explanations and we'll have to communicate that with the city and county to ensure that they understand why those funding levels are different this year. They do forecast out for five years. The thing to keep in mind as well is in their CIP, it is strictly maintenance items. They don't particularly put new facilities or expansions in their CIP because they seek a different funding source.
Right.
So, our plan is a total comprehensive look at what we need from a CIP standpoint. When they develop their plan, they develop it from the resources that they have available. So, our plans could look different.
So, how much above the county's budget are we at the moment?
Over four years, we're $12 million over.
Okay, but don't they have a number for next year?
They do not have a fiscal year '22 number for me because we start our process so early. They do not start their process until the beginning of the year starts.
They don't have a fiscal year 2018?
22. They don't have 22. From 2018 through 2021, our plan at this point is $12 million over what the city and county gave us as their projected number through 2021 last year.
Okay. But they don't break it down to you by, kind of, annual, year for how much capital?
They do. I don't have that breakdown with me. I know it was $12 million over four years.
Okay. Could you just send that to us?
Sure.
Just so we, we know.
Actually, I might have it.
Actually, isn't that this?
No, that's, uh-uh. Fiscal year '18 is 1.7 million.
Over?
Over. Fiscal year '19 is 4.8 million, over. Fiscal year '20 is 2.8 million, over. And fiscal year '21 is 3.8 million, over.
So, once again, we have to have discussion with our funding partners and to understanding of what our, what our needs are going to be and where, where they can, where they can fund it from. I think that's all I have. Thank you. Any other board member comments at this point on the CIP? That brings us to 11.01, board members' comments, comments from board members this evening. Ms. Minor?
First, I'd like to say congratulations to Lafayette's PTSA for winning the award. Parent involvement at our schools is key to student success and PTSAs are one of the most helpful ways to engage parents at their schools. So, and I know as you move through middle and high school, it's much more difficult, so good work on getting that award. It's impressive. Also, congratulations to Warhill, Jamestown, and Lafayette for the Wise Financial Award. I would like to encourage the PTA, PTSAs, division-wide, as I know you drive, your membership drives some of those awards, to advertise more broadly than just the members of your schools. I think that you have board members here that might join if you sent us an envelope. I think some members do belong, but I also think there is business and community members that you might reach out to who I know support you on a regular basis because the more we draw on our parents and our community, the stronger our schools are. So, I would just encourage you to do that. I'd like to thank Ms. O'Brien for inquiring about the pacing on the naming of the schools. Certainly, we are aware that the community has met, once if not twice.
Yes, I believe the committee's met at least once at this time and I'll provide you an update in next week.
Okay. Thank you for that. And, and the groundbreaking is, was a great event today. It is difficult for us to move forward with facilities. I have some experience in my 26 years here, so it's always accumulation of a lot of work by a lot of individuals from the school division, from the county, from the city, from parents and community members who advocate for those facilities for our students. And in a community that is always growing, in my 26 years, and it looks like it will be growing for a long time going forward, being ahead of the curve on facilities is difficult. And often because of the way we manage our facilities, we may bid it out not in the most fiscally wise time instead of having the opportunity to bid projects when they would be less expensive for both borrowing and for construction. But I was excited today. It was a great event and I'm happy to see that we're moving ahead on that fourth middle school.
Ms. Young?
I, I would like to add, just to what Ms. Minor said, I would like an update on the Rawlsburg situation, the renaming process and where we are in that process. I didn't say anything when Matthew Bailey was giving their little news program. I would love to have that at my home every morning. I think that would be a lot more fun than, than what I currently hear. But I do want to congratulate them on that program. I'm also very impressed that the Parents Academy is going to address the need for resiliency in our students. I think one of the things is we, we watch our young college students going off, the need to become resilient in the face of what's happening currently in our world, I think is a necessity. And as an adult, you have to be resilient. We certainly want to release high school seniors into a world with some skills so that they can be resilient. There's a lot of things out there they're going to face that they haven't had an opportunity or challenged, have been challenged yet to face those. So, I'm excited about that as a topic. So, I'm going to thank the Parents Academy for that.
Ms. Cook?
Yeah, I'd like to thank the staff, administration staff for their handling of preparing and for Hurricane Matthew. I know that was sort of, yeah, exciting, and so thank you for doing that and putting everybody's safety first. We appreciate that you do that for every weather event. I'd also like to thank the citizens and students who applied for and agreed to serve on our advisory committees. It's a really important role and it makes the work of this division better and stronger with the more people that participates. So, thank you for that. I'd also like to echo Ms. Minor's comments about today's groundbreaking at James Blair. It was a great day for the community, a great day for regional collaboration, and so that was, it was a pleasure to be a part of that. Also, like to thank the county and the city for approving our year-end spending request recently. That was great news and excited again to have such a successful regional partner, partners to work with. And lastly, I'd just like to say thank you to Ryan McKinnon. Congratulations. We will miss you. You've done a great job of reporting on the school division and trying to really learn and understand the issue. So, thank you very much. You did a great job and we'll miss you.
Thank you. I would echo, echo on the groundbreaking ceremony, whoever?
I'll say something.
Mrs. Hummel.
I wanted to say I enjoyed Manufacturing Day. That was, I was only able to kind of come to the lunch part of it, but next year, I'm going, I'm in for the whole thing. I'm going to go and go to all the manufacturing sites. For, for those of you who may not know about that event, I think it's a great way for our high school students to actually see the manufacturing opportunities that are in our own backyard. It was, it was just great to see their enthusiasm, especially when the students spoke at the luncheon about what they got out of the day. So, it was a very nice opportunity to bridge this need between our community for skilled workforce and the schools. I'd also like to say I enjoyed the groundbreaking, even though I was not offered a golden shovel or hard hat, but that's okay. It was still nice to see Dr. Heron out there shoveling the dirt, so good for that. And then I wanted to thank the community that is tonight supporting the WJCC Education Foundation Committee and thank the teachers and staff who submitted grants for innovation. So, we'll see what comes up in the coming months, which grants are going to be awarded, and that'll be something that'll be kind of exciting to, to look forward to. I think that's it.
Thank you. Okay, so now that everybody stole my thunder, what am I going to talk about? Thanks for the, for the, Mrs. Overkamp Smith and the Public Relations Crew for the groundbreaking ceremonies, special bonus to whoever ordered the weather for today. 85 degrees in the middle of October and a nice sunny day was, was wonderful. Thank for the good support we got from our board members and our, from the board members who attended, the supervisors and the city council for all of their support of that event and their support for the, the new school. Mrs. Cook mentioned the year-end spending plan. That's another sign of good cooperation between this, this body, our Board of Supervisors and the City Council. We have, we have good communication and we, we're all pulling on the same rope. We all want what's best for the community. We all want good schools and I appreciate their good support. Mrs. Hummel mentioned the Education Foundation. The amount of support that we get from the Education Foundation, the fairly small grants that go to the teachers, but the, the sign of support that those grants show to the, to the schools, to the teachers, to the school, to the students, understanding that that is coming, you know, directly from the community, is really uplifting for the, for the school system and for the teachers, and I appreciate all those who participate in that. Manufacturing Day is an all-in thing. I was, I've, I've been to a couple, couple of them, all-in, and some of the things you're, that happens in Williamsburg, James City County, really, is, it was, that was pretty amazing. And Mrs. Cook mentioned Mr. McKimmon leaving. Just when we started breaking him in, he just moves on, so. But we wish you all the best and wish you all, all the luck. Upcoming events, school liaison meets November 4th. It seems like you guys are always meeting. Building D at Mount, you're meeting up here, Mount Bay? 1:00? Okay. Policy Committee, 11, November 29th at 1:30, Room 113 in the Stryker Center. The VSBA Annual Convention is November 16th through 18th. The VSB A Annual Convention is November 16th through 18th at the Williamsburg Lodge and Conference Center, where many of our associates from across the state come for professional development and benchmarking. Good, good event. We have a closed session on October 24th at 5:00 in Room 309 at the Annex, followed by an open session immediately after the closed session to evaluate or award search firm for the superintendent search. We have a closed session November 1st, 6:00 in Room 309 in the Annex, followed at 6:30 by a work session, also in Room 300 at the Annex on November 1st. Closed session, November 15th at 6:00 here at Building F, followed by a public hearing on the CIP at 6:30 here in Building F, and immediately followed, meeting following the public hearing, is a regular meeting of the school board, also here in Building F. And with that, thank you all for your attendance and support and activity, and we are adjourned.